Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the new republic which is in our hands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as for all.
Clerk will call attendance.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Bishop.
Yes.
Counselor Tejada. Counselor Avellaneda. Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Pilatanda.
Yeah.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
And Counselor Ray Cooperall.
Your members present. Madam Chairman, you have a call. First thought of business be public hearing. Public hearing on the proposed provision of recreational marijuana establishments.
Right now, we'll open up the podium for any comments related to the public hearing on the recreational marijuana ordinance. If anybody wishes to speak on it, please come up and speak up. Come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Maureen Colley, 150 Captain's Row. I appreciate the fact that the city council has put in a lot of time and effort into discussing this matter, which I understand is controversial, although for me, it's not controversial at all. The people have voted in Chelsea with the people have spoken, and now the only issue is where, what districts to put it in. I am in agreement with the city manager that we should have two districts where it is allowed, because we are allowed up to four businesses. And I understand Counselor Avellaneda's concerns about safety for the elderly and disabled in the industrial zone. However, remember that all of the specifics of this have to go through the planning and zoning boards, so there's nothing to prevent the planning and zoning boards from requiring reasonable parking and reasonable access for all of the people. I feel like we're stuck like in the nineteen-whatevers. We're like a century behind here, where we envision marijuana dispensaries as being places where people roll up, go in, purchase some weed, and then come out and get high and act stupid. That is not what's up now. This is 2018. We don't play like that now. I feel that from a legal standpoint, as well as a convenience standpoint, we need to keep this stuff out of the downtown for sure, and put it in two different kinds of districts, the industrial zone and the shopping centers or whatever it is. Also, you know, let us be real clear on this. It's not like a bunch of hippies rolling up to your friend's house and purchasing a couple of joints. This is not what happens. You have to have your valid ID. In the case of medical marijuana, you have to have your prescription card, blah, blah, blah. It's just not going to be crazy. Anyway, let's just do it and get it done, so that we don't have a landslide of lawsuits because we were acting stupid. So, I would ask the city councils to make a good decision and make it tonight.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes.
My name is Roberto Rodriguez, and my address is... Eight-five-five, bro. I'm going to try. Okay. So, I just, I just want to talk about medical marijuana, what it really is. People got a wrong idea what this is, and let me tell you, the medical marijuana is already in the streets, and it's way cheaper than in the dispensaries. But in the dispensary, we get the real stuff and the stuff that we need. And it's do, it's done in a quality form. And it's, let's be honest, this is the, the only way to go for the opioid epidemic or whatever. In Maine, they are curing people. There are clinics of cannabis working with opioid patients. So, this is huge. I use it for pain. I was using, in 2015, I was up to forty milligrams of prednisone, of osycodone, every four hours. I take ten milligrams every two, three, four days now. I use the oil. And, and the people that go there, they're not, I mean, I don't want to think I'm a douchebag or a lowlife or whatever, but from, I'm, I'm the youngest people that go there. I'm one of the youngest people that go there. So, we need, we need accessibility. We need, I mean, this is something that, that is going to benefit the city. I don't see why the dispensary is not going to fight, is not going to compete with the streets. They always get it cheaper. We need quality, and this is something, this is something else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on recreational marijuana? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Farnham, and I live at 7940 Cherokee Street in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania currently. I am here tonight. Thank you, City Council, for having me and listening to me. I work with a family that's currently deeply rooted in Chelsea, and we are, they are current business owners on Eastern Avenue. We are interested in applying for recreational cultivation and retail license. We bring together twenty years of experiences in both large agriculture and flowers, as they're originally from Columbia, and myself with a decade of experience in growing in medical marijuana in Colorado and California. I came here tonight to introduce myself and to hear the city council's thoughts and the general public's thoughts, and to introduce myself and our business, Harbor House Collective. And we hope that you will consider us in the thoughts as you make the vote tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on recreational marijuana? Oh, okay.
So, thank you, Madam President. I did want to speak in favor of the ordinance that I presented, or at least the, in favor of having an ordinance. As you know, this recreational marijuana was approved on the ballot in Chelsea, which means we have to allow a certain number of recreational marijuana facilities in the city. I believe, under the regulations, we will be required to allow up to as many as four retail facilities, presuming there is that kind of interest in the city. So, I have proposed an ordinance to try to accommodate that new industry in a way that I thought was reasonable. I proposed it in three zoning districts, shopping center, highway business, and industrial. I'm not necessarily opposed to the council narrowing that. I just caution you that if there is a desire to narrow it, you have to leave enough zones for these businesses to operate, so that you would be considered to be reasonably accommodating up to four retailers in the city. So, that would be the standard that a court would look at if someone were to challenge your ordinance. You do need to pass some ordinance to regulate this industry in order to ensure that the entire city is not open to this use, once the Cannabis Control Commission starts to issue licenses, which I understand may be effective as early as July 1. So, I speak in favor of the passage of an ordinance on the lines that I proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrosina. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Public hearing is closed. Public speaking? Anyone for public speaking? Please state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Clarice Vega. I live in 116 Clark Avenue, and I'm here to speak on the schools committee, the school, the Chelsea Public School System financial crisis. I know that many of you in the, in the past have been here and have funded the, the school department at level funding. So, we wish you guys to do the same. We wish you to continue to support the school system, as many of you in the past have done. But I really think, and I'm going to highlight it again, what I said the last time in the school committee meeting. I really think that it's not enough to give money to the school department without doing more in terms of the state. I need you guys to play a key role in probably suing the state of Massachusetts for not fairly giving the amount of money or the reimbursement that the city of Chelsea needs. I think that it's important for you as a school, as members of the city council, to rescue our schools, but it's also, I think that we're leaving the state behind, and we are, we are allowing them to, to basically have this problem be someone else's problem. And this reimbursement problem needs to be addressed, and I really think we need to address the way that the formula has been used, and I urge the city council to join the Brockton Mayor and the city council there to take action. So, when I said last time in the city council, in the school committee, that, you know, our elected officials need to do that, do things like that, in order for them to be fighting, in order for them to be reelected, I 100% believe that our city council needs to make sure that the money that we have coming to the city comes to the, to the city in a fairly way, and I really think that we, when we elect you into office, is to basically watch for the interests of our voters, and our residents, and our students. So, I'm not taking my statement away. I fairly believe that we should be fighting aggressively to get the state to provide the reimbursement formula, so that we get the actual amount of money that we need to get, and for you guys to join other low-income communities, because I feel the state, we're leaving the state a little bit too soft on this, and we continue to take the vast majority of the burden of the, for, to cover the school, the public school system. So, that's why I'm, I'm grateful that you have covered, in the past, at level funding. I, we need you to do the same, but we need you to then join aggressively other low-income communities and sue the state of Massachusetts on this issue, because it's completely unfair that the city of Chelsea continues to sort of like do more than what the state is doing. Gracias.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Just any Alpharo, 12 High Street. I'm a school committee member for District 8. So, I'm here just to say thank you for putting the level funding up this year, as you did last year, but I'm here also to ask for your support to come to these public meetings that we have as a school committee, because a lot of the questions that arise, we as a school committee, we cannot answer. And the 29, we have another open meeting to respond to the budget funding that the city have graciously increased the funding, the funding level. But in addition to that, I also urge you to, you know, help us to advocate at the Congress level, because it is hard to see when we are sitting on, on the seat, how we cutting on funding. Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for coming at the last meeting. It was greatly appreciated, and I'm here just asking for your support to be present at that meeting of the 29, and if you can also call the Congress to, you know, support us with more funding, because we know that as a city, we are doing a lot in trying to, you know, to not cut a lot of the, the budget, but at the same time, it is tearing my heart apart to see how, you know, some of the students are the ones that are going to be paying the consequences, students that are your constituents, my constituents, and just hoping to see you on the 29. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Shanga Bang, and I live on 16th Mary Street. I just really want to address also on the funding issue, but more so on social, social workers. I think students really need to be supported throughout their school year, especially when gun violence is on the rise, and this is when we need to watch them the most, especially our high school students. I also want to address more funding for special education. I feel like they have been denied their right to proper educators and their resources, and right now, we don't see them in after-school programs or activities, so I think we need to pay more attention to that also. And of course, Chelsea Collaborative invites you on our community meeting on April 3 to hear us out more. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Robert Figueroa. I live in 77 Livey Street, and I go to Chelsea High. We appreciate you for always, like, supporting us and putting youth first on your checklist. We're facing a crisis right now, and that's school fundings. So, you're, so, so student safety should be something you should worry about. Lots of, lots of shootings have been happening around the country, and we can't depend on our presidents right now, so we're depending on you. And I think students shouldn't, shouldn't be worried about getting shot. They should be worrying about, like, education, homework, hiding their boyfriend or girlfriend from the parents, you know? Yeah. But that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Name and address, please.
Hola, mi nombre es Astrid, tengo quince años. Soy estudiante de Chelsea High School.
My name is Alvi, and I'm a student from Chelsea High School.
Y vivo en la 101, la Essex Street.
And I live in Essex Street.
Primero les doy gracias por siempre apoyar la juventud de nuestra ciudad.
First, I would like to thank you for always supporting the youth in our city.
También les quiero compartir un poco sobre los jóvenes en mi escuela.
I also want to share with you a little bit about the youth in my school.
Cuatro de mis compañeros abandonaron la escuela este año porque tenían necesidad de trabajar para ayudar a pagar bilis.
Four of my classmates left school this year because they needed to help their parents by working to pay the bills.
Estos estudiantes tienen quince a dieciocho años y se sienten sin apoyo en las escuelas y en sus casas.
These students have between fifteen and, they're between fifteen and eighteen, and they feel like they don't have any support in their schools and at home.
Por eso abandonan para trabajar en limpieza o en restaurante. Gracias.
And that's why they give up school to work in restaurants or cleaning houses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Andres Patino. I live on 12 Grove Street, and I'm a student at Chelsea High. And I am here to, to say thank you for everything you've done for the youth, but I am mostly here to say that, to please continue funding our education for our well-being, but I'm really here to talk most about the music programs. I feel as if there isn't much after-school programs for youth to continue their passions for music, so please continue the funding, because I remember the music program I took during my middle school years, and I loved every second of it. I remember making friends and learning new things, and because of that, I'm now taking music classes in high school. And one of the classes was music production, where we get to learn how to become a producer. And that even brought me more closer to my friends and everything, so if there was after-school classes just like that, I would take them. So, I'm just going to repeat one last time. Thank you, and to please continue the funding for music and art programs in our public schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you first for giving me the time to speak and for listening to all our youth tonight. I want to speak today as...
Your name and address for the record.
Oh, of course, and I was telling them, don't forget to say your name and address. My name is Maria Lisa Jesus. I'm a resident at 31 Lewis Street. I'm a parent, and I am also a community organizer at the Chelsea Collaborative. I'm going to talk to you guys today as a parent of a five-year-old who benefits tremendously from programs in the ELC that help him focus in large classroom sizes. My son would be affected directly if we continue to lose funding for our special education and mental health services within the schools. This, my son is one of many students with the same, the similar case. I also want to talk to you guys about the fact that these are our youth, and, and we need to prepare them today, because our futures depend on it, right? Our futures and our life will be in their hands when they take on the positions within our government. So, we need to make sure that we are continuing to support them and their education, and, you know, I, I always count on you guys and, and our city manager on making sure that their safety, their opportunity for employment and education is, is in the forefront. Unfortunately, we can't say the same for the state, but please join us in the efforts in advocating at the state and shaming them, right? Shaming our federal government and the state for not making corrections on the foundation budget and for not putting our youth's safety first and their education first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Well, it's budget time again, and here we are, cutting and cutting and cutting.
Name and address for the record.
Rosemary Carlisle, 109 Sagamore Ave.
Thank you.
A resident and a member of the Chelsea School Committee. We're making cuts again, and we shouldn't be making cuts. The children of Chelsea are the future of Chelsea and the future for the United States. We cannot cut education without harming these children. We are harming them because we're not giving them proper education. As members of the city council and as a member of the school committee, we should be working together to make sure the state funding comes down from the State House. I made my phone calls to all the people that are helping us in the city of Chelsea. I talked to a couple of the people on the city council, and thank you, Leo Robinson, for showing up at the budget meeting the other night. But we need to work together to make sure this budget is the right budget for the children and the teachers in this community. Chelsea is lucky to have the teachers and the administrators and the people working in the school systems that we do, but together, we can work to make sure that the budget for the city of Chelsea is a beneficial, beneficiary to the children of Chelsea. You saw some of the kids from the high school tonight. Thank you all for coming. I'm very proud of the children in the city of Chelsea, especially the high school kids, because they come up and they voice their opinion, and that's what I want yous to do. I want you to let, let the people in Chelsea know that you're being educated here in Chelsea and what we're doing for you. There are so many good things we are doing for you, and so many of yous are going on to college and further education. I am very proud of yous. As a member of the school committee, I want to make sure we can work with, together with the council, to make sure this budget is what we need for these kids. And we are lucky to have Jerry McHugh and Mary Bork, Superintendent Bork has been working hard to make sure she didn't have to cut, but she had to make the cuts in some departments. Special Ed is very important, too. You know all the problems we have in special ed. We have to make sure those children are well-educated, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public speaking? Going once, going twice? Public speaking is closed. Next order of business.
Prove of the minutes.
Prove of the minutes. Counselor Garcia?
I'm sending a motion to accept and file if there are objections under suspension.
Seeing none.
Communication from the city manager. We have a communication from the city manager. First communication, notice of waiver intent. Dear councilors, I'm writing to notify you that I am considering the grant of residency waivers to two current employees, Veterans Agent Francisco Turbo and Treasury Department employee Miguel Justiniano. Both employees have relocated out of the city. Veterans Agent Francisco Turbo has been employed with the city since 1997. Ms. Justiniano has been employed since August of 2014. In accordance with the Administrative Code Part 4, Section 112.02, I request that you provide me with any comments on these proposed waivers within seven days.
Counselor Robinson moves to accept and file under suspension.
The next communication from the city manager. Adoption of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, and C for Chelsea Scholarship Fund. Dear councilors, I'm writing to request that the city council consider adopting, as a local option, the provision of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, as to allow for the city to create a new municipal scholarship fund. The fund would be utilized to provide financial aid to residents of the city who have been accepted to pursue post-secondary school education. As you are aware, many of the city's residents struggle to afford the cost of post-secondary education, although the school department distributes a certificate...
Chair recognizes Counselor Brown.
And we have the next order of reading. Seeing no objections. Thank you, Counselor Brown.
The next communication from the city manager. Parking tickets. Dear councilors, I'm writing in response to your city council order requesting a list-by-street of parking ticket issued in the past fourteen months for the resident's ticket and overnight commercial parking violations.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bishop.
I put the order in at the last meeting, and it was my intention, first of all, to put it in just my own district. When I thought about it, I said, gee, maybe some of the other councilors might want to see what's going on in their district, and that probably would be amended, so let me make it the whole city. I didn't realize it was that many tickets. I spent an hour or more scrolling through the online thing that was sent, a list of parking tickets. It was not very helpful to me. One of the reasons it was not very helpful was that it didn't give street numbers. My interest in having this information, my district board is Everett, and I wanted to see how many tickets are being given out close to the borderline of Everett. And with no numbers, with no street numbers on the tickets, I had to guess where on the street, you know, the ticket was being issued. So, I have resubmitted an order tonight, asking for a similar thing as this, as I put in last week, but just for District 1. If any other council wants it, they'll have to put in their own order. And I'm asking that I also get the street numbers and a printed copy, so that I can look through it.
So...
So, I move to accept and file this communication, and I have another order going in under new business.
Thank you, Counselor.
The next communication from the city manager. Funding for educational pilots. Dear councilor, I am writing to request that the city council consider funding two separate education-related pilot programs that will provide financial support for undergraduate college costs. First program is aimed at helping Chelsea High School.
Chair recognizes Counselor Garcia.
I make a motion to read the reading and... And to accept and file communication, there will be something coming up under new business.
The next communication from the city manager. Council financial requests. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to two recent council orders setting forth financial priorities of the city council. The first order is request funding in the FY19 budget for independent legal representation for the city council. The second order requests that the transfer of $20 million in existing free cash funds to stabilization accounts. I will accommodate both requests. With respect to independent legal counsel, I will include in my FY19 budget proposal line item and the city council budget of $15,000 for legal counsel. That should be more than sufficient for the limited occasions during the course of one fiscal year, when the council will need independent legal advice. As for the transfer of $20 million to the stabilization funds, I will prepare the necessary orders shortly probably for an April city council meeting. I'd like to accomplish this transfer in combination with the consolidation of our existing five stabilization accounts into just two accounts, a general stabilization account and a school capital project stabilization account. I need a bit of time to draft the necessary orders, as well as to analyze how much I wish to recommend for allocation to these two different stabilization funds.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bishop.
At the last meeting of the city council...
What's your motion, Counselor?
My motion is to accept and file the communication.
You have the floor.
At the last meeting of the city council...
I need a bit of time to draft the necessary orders as well as to analyze how much I wish to recommend for allocation to these two different stabilization funds.
Chair recognizes Councilor Bishop.
At the last meeting of the City Council...
What's your motion, Councilor?
My motion is to accept and file the communication.
You have the floor.
At the last meeting of the City Council, the council voted seven to zero to approve establishing a stabilization account with $20 million of the free cash that the city has. Seven, with eight members present, I think the vote would have been higher if everyone were here, but there were only eight councilors here, and seven of the eight voted for that. I'm a very reasonable person. Some of yous may not think so, but I am. I understand it should have come from the City Manager, this communication, but I wanted to put the City Council on record as to where they stood on all of this free cash that the city now has accumulated. I think it's imperative, as I said at the last meeting, that the stabilization fund have a lot of money in it so that we can get by three or four years of bad financial situations. The City Man, the City Solicitor, for some reason, ruled that my communication was not passed because it needed two-thirds vote. I tried in vain to say, no, it doesn't, no, it doesn't. But as it turns out, it doesn't, it didn't need two-thirds vote. It only needed six votes. So, in effect, that passed at the last council meeting. I am more than willing to wait till the City Manager gets the information he needs and puts it before the City Council for the $20 million stabilization fund. I am going on rec, I'm asking the council to go on record a little later in the meeting to establish a school building major repair stabilization account in the tune of $3 million. Now, I heard through the grapevine that the City Manager was considering this and that, and, you know, we'll have to wait and see what he presents to the board. I wanted to put this council on record that this school stabilization fund would be established and that $3 million would be put in it. That's coming up a little bit later in the meeting. But I'm hoping that the City Council will support that, and I thank them for supporting the other thing, and we will wait for the City Manager to submit those appropriations to us.
Thank you, Councilor. Next order of business?
Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from the parking clerk, Jeanette Citron White, regarding the actions that were approved at the February 20th.
The appointments and boards and commissions.
Okay. Excuse me. We have one more communication from the City Manager, I believe. Appointments to boards and commissions. Dear Councilors, pursuant to Section 4.2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individual boards and commissions to the city. For appointment to the Licensing Commission, Mr. Matthew Frank, 41 Ghulie Road, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring in 2021. For appointment to the Planning Board, Ms. June Cromwell, 38 Addison Street, Chelsea, to take place of Ms. Ashley Owens, who has moved out of the city. Term expires February 21, 2019. For appointment to the Cultural Council, Ms. Juliana T. Borgiani-Gaiga, 61 Botson's Way, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring in 2021. For appointment to the Chelsea Community School Advisory Board, Ms. Vanessa Mendoza-Macado, 318 Chestnut Street, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring in 2021. For appointment to the Cultural on Elder Fears, Mr. Gerard E. Slater, 77 Garfield Ave, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring in 2021. Due to an error on my part, I also ask that you revote your approval on Mr. Richard Pantano to the Economic Development Board for a five-year term expiring on February 28, 2023. I had mistakenly identified this as a three-year appointment, and you approved that appointment at your meeting of March 12th. However, appointments to the Economic Development Board are for five years.
Chair recognizes Councilor Robinson.
I'd ask to move it to a second reading, other than the, I'd ask for a revote on Mr. Rick Pantano, as it was supposed to be a five-year appointment. It was listed as a three-year appointment, so we need a roll call vote to affirm his appointment.
So, you want to move all the other appointments to boards and commissions to a second reading and take up the individual voter, Mr. Pantano, for the five-year Economic Development Board?
As we voted for three years.
We voted already on it. A yes vote would be to have the five years attached. Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Absent.
Councilor Abideneta?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
And Councilor Ray Coopero?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent, motion adopted. I believe that's all the communications. We now have the communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from parking clerk Jeanette Citron White regarding the actions that were approved at the February 20, 2018 Traffic and Parking Commission meeting. Pleasure to counsel.
We'll accept and file a communication under suspension if there's no objection.
We have no committee reports, unfinished business.
Unfinished business, Councilor Garcia.
So, when I'm present, I make a motion to move all matters of the marijuana ordinance conference.
No.
And also make... A motion to adopt the recreational marijuana ordinance by a roll call vote.
Roll call vote under suspension. Okay, so now we're, the recreational marijuana is on the floor. Any councilors wish to speak on it? Councilor Abideneta?
Yes, I would make a motion to amend the amendment two so that the Chapter 34 reads the table of principal use as presented to my colleagues, and if I may speak on that.
You have the floor, Councilor.
Thank you. And I want to stress right here that this is different than the one that I had spoken about in the council chambers. To allay the concern that was brought by the City Manager, I added another district to the retail areas so that if you look at the updated version, there are two areas in the city now.
Councilor Coopero. Councilor Coopero. Counselor, we can't hear. Thank you.
That the two areas that are now would be allowed to have marijuana retailer or medical marijuana treatment center would be, one, the shopping areas, and, two, the business highway districts. That would more than satisfy the need for any retail use up to four to be allowed within the city. It still does not put it in the downtown area, but nor does it put it or allow in the industrial area. I do allow the other three uses or the, or permitted uses, independent marijuana testing laboratory in the industrial zone, marijuana cultivation in the industrial zone, and marijuana product manufacturer in the industrial zone. All of these would be done by special permit. Now, as I spoke within the district, in the, in our subcommittee meeting, I, you know, have a little bit of experience in dealing with uses of the industrial zone or visiting such areas. Both my previous role as an executive director for the Chamber of Commerce, when I had to work with the freight forwarders in that area, delivering documentation, documentation of origins, which is necessary to export products or import, and also currently in, as a restaurant owner, coffee shop owner, my trips to not only the Restaurant Depot but also to the Produce Center. I can tell you from firsthand experience what it is like as an individual who drives a regular passenger vehicle and goes into those areas. You're dealing with trucks. You're dealing with parking lots that are designed for trucks, parking that is designed for trucks, buildings that are designed for trucks, loading docks. There's no ramps, there's no stairwells that, and I can tell you from someone who considers himself an experienced driver, there are a lot of close calls when you're dealing with trucks coming and going and so forth. So, I do not believe that retail use is conducive to the industrial zone and which, the way it's planned and the way it's used. I think it's a recipe for disaster. I do believe that we, this, the way this is planned, that it's arcane thinking, that the concept of how marijuana would be sold and used and who was going to be visited, it's, the way this is drawn up is by individuals who are thinking about this in, you know, as if it was 20 years ago and not where it is today, not where it is 20 years from now. And that's why I'm think, I'm presenting this as a forward-thinking zoning ordinance. When you think of, when you, Somerville is our closest neighbor that I can, I've visited and has right now medicinal marijuana shops. So, I'm sure they're going to have the retail portion, but right now, if you have a medical card, you can visit Somerville and you can go to dispensaries. They have four. There are actually a few more along the business district. Imagine Broadway. They're on East Cambridge, I'm sorry, East Somerville on Broadway. They're located in Davis Square, and their fronts are very much like a storefront. So, it's not, you don't picture this as if it was in the middle of some warehouse where you have to, you know, walk up this, you know, these stairs where there's a loading dock, and you walk through these places where you're, you're dealing with, you know, lifts and all these other items that are, you know, made, used to take pallets of fruit and such or loading, or trucks that, the freight forwarders. You know, when you think about the zoning, the, you know, retail use, think of it more of a, of like a coffee shop or even a jewelry store. And I brought the pictures inside and for the public to see. I mean, you have showcases, well-lit areas, computer terminals that monitor the sales, display case, very similar to what you would if you were there picking a watch or some jewelry, nothing like, or pastry showcase for that matter, roped-up areas, again, all well-lit. This is what retail marijuana sales look like. Sold to you by a gentleman that could be selling you a latte for crying out loud. That's what he looks like, you know, his little apron and everything. So, it's not the concept of what they're presenting, hence why I said it should be in the retail area. Our retail areas, the shopping centers and the business highway areas that I put in, allowed here, plenty of parking. You have highway accessibility, both handicap, easy sidewalks. The other important thing is buses. You have no public transportation down in the industrial area. What if you have to take the bus? You're not going to take a bus down, you know, Marginal Street or down that area. It's not going down Eastern Avenue. So, again, the amenities that are needed to, for a retail zone or retail sale are not in those areas. I want to point out to the map, make sure that we're all aware, you know, what, how the large swaths of land that we're talking about when we're talking about industrial, all of Eastern Avenue, all of that area off of, down by the Produce Center, which isn't conducive, again. And we made arguments here and follow the arguments that this, you know, if, when we were talking about the strip club and King Arthur's, that that type of, if we, if we were going to have something that is taboo, that it was better to have eyes on it, and that's what this was. We said it would be better if we had it in these areas. Now, again, that's my purpose here. I think that the zoning, this will, you know, the areas that I proposed make the most sense, and they're, the areas of the city of Chelsea, they're going to grow. We know that the Moolahs is going to create more building, more retail space, so the idea that there won't be space is not true. So, I think the opportunity is going to be there, and again, when you're talking about retail, this is the best place to do it, not on the outskirts where it's not meant to be. Thank you.
Any other councilors wish to speak? Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not fully satisfied of what I've heard so far. I'm actually going to be voting against it. I still have some questions regarding some of the location. As we had our quick meeting this afternoon in the back here, even our department, planning department, cautious us about some of these areas that we're looking to host these places. And I just still have questions about it. I know the residents of this city voted in favor with the statewide question. I know we have to move forward. I'm also cautious about the time that we have available, and I know it's not in my, in my right judgment to make a quick decision that I don't feel comfortable with. I want to thank Councilor Abideneta for his work. Spoke about some of the photos that he showed and described this afternoon at this meeting, but I still have to find out for myself exactly where these locations are. I don't want to find after I vote on something that these locations are directly in places where I wouldn't vote it for if I would have known exactly where they were. So, I still have some questions. Appreciate the effort that my colleagues are doing and working with, our City Manager, his support on how he feels that we have to move forward. But personally, if I'm going to make a decision, I want to have as much as information as possible, and at this point, I don't. So, I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors wish to speak on it? All right, so the amendment is before us. We're going to...
Roll call.
Do a roll call. So, can you clarify what a yes or no means?
A yes would be to adopt the amendment as proposed, and no would be to deny, and then you'll be voting on the entire package.
Point of inquiry. So, I know that our colleague Roy Abideneta mentioned that he would like to make an amendment or update the amendment that we have in front of us. Are you amending what you had put in before?
I think that the, the, our city's aide, the council aide, Lydia, had presented you with the revised versions, which should have, if you notice, marijuana retailer should be allowed in two spots by special permit, SP, Business Highway and SC, which is Shopping Center.
So, BH and SC?
Right. If you look at the, if you look at BH, it should be Business Highway. You should have SPs in those areas, special permit.
In the last two rows.
In the last two rows, there for retailer and also a medical marijuana.
Treatment center.
And then the other area that would be, again, by special permit, would be the shopping centers, SP in the last two.
SC.
The only place that you would be able to do laboratory cultivation and manufacture by special permit, again, is in the industrial zone, which is what we already had. So, the only change is made is not to allow it in the industrial and to allow it in the business highway zone, along with the shopping centers.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if I may correct, I believe that a vote on yes is an adoption of the whole packet and not, so if everyone votes yes, not only are you approving the adoption, you're also proving...
Carries the original motion as well.
The original motion.
Yeah.
If everyone votes no, we go back to the original...
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Vido?
No.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
No.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Absent.
Councilor Abideneta?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
No.
Councilor Pilatanda?
No.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
And Councilor Ray Coopero?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six voting in favor, one, two, three, four voting opposed, one absent, and the amendment carries the motion as adopted. You have the other item now.
I believe we need a vote to pass the amendment.
Oh, I just saw the motion. Can you give us the carry motion?
The amendment carries the motion. I'm not sure of that.
So, good question, so...
Two-thirds voted.
So, do we go back to the original motion? Can we?
The voting question is the amount of votes required. Why don't you take a recess?
Let's take a recess for a couple of minutes so we can clarify that.
A two-thirds vote of existing zoning ordinance or a proposal of a brand-new zoning ordinance requires two-thirds vote. So, the amendment to this would require two-thirds. Now, the adoption would also require two-thirds. So, you need eight votes to adopt the marijuana ordinance proposal.
So, the amendment was defeated.
Because it's zoning. If it was a regular ordinance, just an ordinance, it would only be a majority. But where this includes zoning, it requires two-thirds.
So, the amendment was defeated, and now before us is the original recreational marijuana-
Now, the roll call for the original marijuana ordinance introduced by Counselor Garcia. Eight votes would be required. A yes vote would be to adopt, a no vote would be to deny.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Counselor Vido?
Yes. Wait, go.
Do we have another roll call vote on this one? Because we didn't understand, maybe they didn't understand.
You, you, Counselor Recupero, the amendment was defeated. Now before us is the recreational marijuana ordinance, and the clerk is trying to call the roll.
Counselor Vido. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada absent. Counselor Abzaneda?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight votes. Two-thirds. Motion adopted by two-thirds vote.
Yep. So, that carries.
Yep.
All right.
Now, you have another one. You have another order pertaining to the marijuana-
Unfinished business.
Under unfinished business.
Oh, wait, actually. Counselor Garcia?
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion to adopt a recreational marijuana ordinance, no, I'm sorry, the order pertaining to the 3% sales tax. And we bring that to the floor and that we will roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Seeing no objections.
This is the 3% tax on marijuana maximum allowed by the state. Yes vote would be to allow. Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada absent. Counselor Abzaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero. Ten in favor and unopposed. One absent. Motion adopted.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business. We have the food trucks wherever they are.
Chair recognizes Counselor Pilatanda.
I'm going to take the food truck ordinance and all pertaining matters out of conference.
Okay. And it's probably before us. What do you want to do with it?
I'd like to move it to a public hearing for April 23 under suspension.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing none. So, food truck ordinance, we would have a public hearing for food trucks here on April 23. So, anyone that wants to come and speak on it, that would be your opportunity. Second reading.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Bishop read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of $25,000 from the overlay surplus account to the assessors office appraisal service account.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bishop.
Roll call.
Okay.
On the order, this is a transfer within the assessing department. We've discussed it at the last two meetings. And it's to provide a better service to the public for the equipment that they have on the counter when you come in to look up information and so on. It's an update of the systems. And so, I move roll call.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion on this order? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada absent. Counselor Abzaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Ten in favor and unopposed. One absent. First order under new business, order introduced by Counselor Vido, Counselor Abzaneda. Order that the city hereby accepts the provision of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 60 and 3C for the purpose of creating a municipal scholarship fund and operating such fund in full accordance with the statute.
Chair recognizes Counselor Avellaneda.
Move to a second reading.
A second reading.
Move to a second reading. I couldn't hear. Okay. Order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of $150,000 from free cash to a new fund, number 7400, Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship Program to provide tuition funding for Chelsea High School graduates.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bishop.
Madam President, I move to a second reading. And if I may speak on it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
This, we had a subcommittee and finance committee meeting this evening, and this was explained to the members of the board. As the chairman of the finance committee, it's one of my duties to put these issues before the city council. So, I've signed the order putting it before. However, I cannot support it. I was elected by the taxpayers of my district, and I have great difficulty trying to explain to them how I would spend $150,000 of their money on something that we are not required to do. We are required to provide police protection. We are required to provide fire protection. We are required to par, to provide K through 12 education to everyone that appears at the school looking for a K through, well, through 12 education. We are not required to provide money to pay for degrees for people after they graduate from Chelsea High School. And I think it's a wonderful program. It should be funded from other sources, private. This is not something that I would, I could ever say to the taxpayer, I took your money and gave it to someone to pay for their college degree. I'm sorry. If you want to take this money and put it into the school system, I'm in favor of that. We are required to provide K through 12. We are not required to provide anything beyond that. The city manager is requesting this as a pilot program. This could be a lot more money, and I assumed it would be a lot more money in the future. Where it gets out that Chelsea is paying for your college degree, I think we may have a lineup at the door at Chelsea High School. I mean, I just don't understand it. Therefore, I will not be voting for it, but I am moving it to a second reading, and the city council can make, each person can make their own determination. But I feel I really have to answer to the taxpayer, not just when I go to get re-elected, but all the time. And this is not something I can justify. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else wish to speak on it? Counselor Brown?
No, I'll go, please. The member of the finance committee has-
Attend those meetings weekly, and I want to thank the chairman for just having those meetings before we can get on the floor. But I disagree with my chairman on this one here. I believe that this is a very innovative way of us collaborating with our school. And also, we have a university as Bunker Hill Community College has been willing to put up half, if not even half, but a lot of money to invest in our kids here in the city of Chelsea. They're, they're stating that they will be paying the tuition. We just have to pay what the fees are and other stipends to get those kids in there. It's a collaboration where kids will be not only supported by their city, but also by the schools here first enrolled into a college program where I know a lot of success can happen. I know our community have a lot of issues, but this is an issue that we have money. It's a pilot program. I'm not sure how many folks will take advantage of it. I'm hoping everyone that wish to get higher education or to go on to college will be eligible for it. It's not something that we're taking for granted. But I believe this is a step in the right direction. The city of Chelsea has been getting a lot of praises over the last few years. And the reason why I believe that we get these praises here in the city of Chelsea is because the type of work that this council do and the city manager and former city counselors and former city managers. So, I'll be, when it comes up into the conference, I'll be speaking on it again, and I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. I also appreciate the comments of my colleague and fellow chairman, and I also appreciate the fact that he is open to have dialogue and to set up these meetings. I concur with Counselor Brown. But I also think it's important to keep in mind that our youth, they're also part of our constituency. And in the future, they will be the taxpayers. And it's so important for us to invest in our youth and to create more options for them and not limit them. So, I am a huge believer in the dual enrollment program that started back in 2007 in Chelsea High School. I actually benefited from that program. I was very fortunate to be able to attend a four-year college, a private school. But I also give credit to Bunker Hill for giving me the opportunity, not only do we have them here, but for giving us the opportunity to collaborate, not only as a city, but also with the community college. It, personally, I benefited from it because I had the opportunity to really explore college classes before I even got to college. It gave me the opportunity to really lower the cost of my college attendance when I actually made it to college. So, I think our students need options. I know that we are facing a time of crisis. Our education is facing crisis, and we hear this time again and again. We have students here that are asking us for more. They're asking us for funding for musical programs, for opportunities. So, let's not shut down the options for our students, and let's give them those options. Let's include everyone. So, I am completely for this. $150,000 is not going to send us to bankruptcy. So, let's continue to invest in our youth. Let's continue to provide options, and let's stop denying them from that because they are our constituents as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And this will be going to a second reading so we can have further debate on it in a couple of weeks when we meet again.
Next order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of $50,000 from free cash to the new FY 2018 personal department account, personnel salaries, tuition reimbursement for employee tuition payments.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bishop.
Madam President, I move it to a second reading.
No, to a second reading.
Next order introduced by Counselor Robinson.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
I'd like to pull that order. Actually, the development team, that day, withdraw that. The development team couldn't all get together on that evening. So, at this time, I have to pull that order. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next order introduced by Counselor Vido. Order that a subcommittee conference be held with the school committee to talk about our collective goals.
Chair recognizes Counselor Rodriguez.
Move to adopt and suspend.
Seeing none. So, moved.
Next order introduced by Counselor Vido. Order that a subcommittee conference be held with roll call to discuss roll call program updates.
Chair recognizes Counselor Rodriguez.
To move to adopt under suspension. If there's no objections.
Seeing none. So, moved.
Order introduced by Counselor Vido. Order that a subcommittee conference be held to discuss DPW snow plowing and removal plan for Tuesday, April 3.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Move to adopt under suspension. If there's no objections.
Seeing none. So, moved. Thank you.
Expect the snowstorm?
I know. In the springtime.
Order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager instruct DPW to fix the potholes between the beginning of Essex Street and the end of Hawthorne Street.
Chair recognizes Counselor Recupero.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. If there's no objection.
Seeing none.
Order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager instruct DPW to evaluate the roads on Pearl Street where the greenhouse is, all the way to Congress Ave.
Chair recognizes Counselor Recupero.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
This little stretch of road is the most deplorable section of road within the city of Chelsea. Elderly people live there, and you should see this road. It's dented. You can't even walk on it. Never mind drive on it. If you walk on it, you will break your face. So, try to walk and then try to drive. And it's deplorable that old people live in this section, and they have to have a section of road where they can't even walk. So, and it's not a very big piece. It might be 200 feet, 300 feet. And it's left like that for years and years and years. I think it's time to reevaluate and see what the city manager can do. Either fix it or at least make it walkable so the old people don't break their face when they're walking. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Recupero.
Order introduced by Counselor Garcia. Request that the city manager and assistant director at DPW look into possibility of donating to old surplus conference room chairs that were made available due to the purchasing of new chairs to the Governor of Bellingham Carey House on behalf of the city.
Chair recognizes Counselor Garcia.
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension. If there are no objections.
Seeing none. Do you want to speak on it?
Oh, briefly.
Okay.
So, essentially, what I am, thank you, Madam President, what I am requesting is we just bought new chairs for our conference rooms, so we have a surplus of old ones. And this is basically a gift that as a city we would be giving to the Bellingham Carey House, which would be a lovely gesture on our behalf as a city, giving that we're no longer using those chairs. So, it'd be great to hand them down to a great organization, an historic organization that needs them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Whereas the Massachusetts Municipal Modernization Act allows cities and towns to create special purpose stabilization funds as a tool for effective planning. And whereas the public school buildings in Chelsea are now all approximately 25 years old, except the Clark Ave School currently under construction, and will need major structural and infrastructure repairs in the near future. Now, therefore, be it hereby ordered that the Chelsea City Council establish and create a new special purpose stabilization fund for major repairs to all Chelsea public school buildings pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40B and 5B. This fund shall be called the Public School Buildings Major Repair Stabilization Fund, and be further ordered that the city council hereby appropriates from free cash $3 million into the Public School Buildings Major Repair Stabilization Fund.
Counselor Bishop.
Madam President, I move it to a second reading. Needs two readings. Is that right? Is that correct?
You want to wait for a second reading?
On the motion.
I'm sorry?
On the motion. Wait, wait until I'm finished, and then you can make an amendment.
Okay.
I, we had some confusion with the $20 million request to the city manager as to how many votes it needed and what the wording was. So, I went to the city solicitor and said, this is what I want. I want to put in a similar request to do a school stabilization fund for major repairs to the school for the reason that the schools are about 25 years old and a roof might go. You have to fix it. HVAC thing, systems are very expensive in those buildings. If one of them goes, we have to come up with the cash to repair them. The city solicitor came up with this, and I am introducing it tonight. And I asked for the city council's support. I think you all are aware that the school buildings are 25 years old now. We still think of them as new schools, which would be nice if they stayed new, but they don't. So, I'm hoping that you will support my effort to establish this stabilization fund for our school building major repairs. So, I move it to a second reading, Madam President? Okay. Thank you.
Any other councils wish to speak on it? Counselor Brown?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be supporting the chairman on this year. I believe it's a right decision in the right direction. As chairman stated, that our schools are a little old and behind, and this year, $3 million is money that we sit aside to look forward on a rainy day when something happened, particular in our school that we have $3 million. So, I believe this is a good thought, a right direction, and I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Before we move on, may I add, it's called to a second reading. I will be offering an amendment to that. And the amendment would read, be further ordered paragraph of item 12K on the agenda regarding public school building major repair stabilization fund to read. Be it further ordered that the city council request the city manager-
Thank you.
-hereby appropriate from free cash $5 million into the public school building major repair stabilization fund.
Okay.
And I will offer that-
When that time comes.
When the time comes. But I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, because I'm not really sure about our ability to actually appropriate funds ourselves. So, I appreciate you bringing that up.
It's, it's at a second reading. I want it suspended.
All right. It's a second reading. Counselor Brown?
So, is he saying it's going to be $8 million?
No, no, no. Changing the fund, the amount from $3 million to $5 million.
So, instead of three, the chairman-
Correct. Correct. This is still going to a second reading, and we can discuss it when it's on the floor at the next council meeting.
Next order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Order that the city manager prevent the city coun, present to the city council an FY 2018 city budget that reflects a 0% increase in property taxes.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bishop. Chair recognizes Councilor Bishop.
If you pay a mortgage in the city of Chelsea or anywhere, if the tax rate goes up your mo-
What is your motion?
I move to, no. I moved, be passed under roll call.
Okay. Adopted under roll call. You have the floor.
Thank you. If you pay a mortgage in the city of Chelsea or anywhere, and the tax rate goes up, your mortgage payment goes up. If you're not paying a mortgage and you're paying rent, if the tax rate goes up, your rent goes up. Simple as that. We need to start thinking about the taxpayer and the rent payer in the city. They can't afford anymore. Between the increase in the tax rate and the increase in the evaluation, they're getting murdered. As I said, that monthly payment you make to the bank, it's affected by this, by the city budget. Now, I'm hoping the city manager is able to submit a budget that will reflect a 0% increase in the, in the tax rate. If he cannot do that, I imagine he will communicate back to us. He, and at least let us know how much has to be cut out of the budget in order to reach that goal. As far as I'm concerned, that's where I want to be when the tax rate is announced. Zero. No increase for anyone. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Anyone else wish to speak on it? Councilor Recupero.
For years, I've been saying that. I support what Councilor Bishop says. We have money to give for everything. Here, we have. We want to give to this one. We want to give to this one. Let's do this fund. Let's do that fund. But yet, when it comes to the poor people that are living here, that are being driven out because they can't afford to live here, we don't want to give them anything. Maybe it's time, we should think the big picture. Who deserves it more than anybody else? The poor people that are being driven out. Why can't they get a break? Anytime anything comes up in front of me that says, "Give to you," I'm going to say no if you say no to this. Because why give to you and not give to the average person that's struggling, that's having a very hard time just to live here? They're being driven out by droves because they can't. And if you're going to turn around and ask me to give you money for the benefit of others, give it to the people that need it the most, that will benefit the most, the people that live here. Thank you.
Um. Should be fiscally in 19, not 18.
Okay.
So I amend, I amend the order to read FY 19?
Correct. Any other councils wish to speak on this? Councilor Avellaneda.
I understand the need to be fiscally conservative at times. However, this is a very dangerous order. First of all, there's no information in front of us at all before asking to make such a major move. The way budgets work, it, this is not in a vacuum. We already have in place certain increases that are going to happen. Employee contracts. No one's here talking about insurance rates. No one's here talking about other utilities, the run of the, you know, running all the buildings and the cost of heating, electricity, and all these other things that naturally go up. And yet, at the same time, what you're saying, all these other costs have to go up in the budget. They're going up no matter what. We already, this council ordered recently for a pay increase of 4% for the firefighters. Where do you think that money's going to go for if you go zero? If you go zero, that means they're going to cut somewhere else. We already have a school department begging for more money, yet you want to say zero increase, zero. Doesn't work that way. At some point in time, yes, I know. It's unpopular that increases in taxes go up. Sometimes it's the commercial rate that's going to go up, but guess what we do? We try to give the maximum benefit, maximum cut to the homeowner, why, why this city offers the highest rate possible in residential tax exemptions. To try to go out this without any information what impact this may have, nothing in front of us. If you do this, what's going to happen? Not to say, well, we can't do it. No. Give us some, give us some edu, give us some information of what the impact of doing this will call for. Because we will have impacts, and all you're doing is squeezing it, squeezing where you are, and we're going to have to cut, do cuts. Absolutely. But you don't know where, because we already made decisions in the future, in the past, that will go with natural increases, and here you are hampering, hamstringing this, this city, the administration for doing this job. If you want to cut taxes, when it's time for the budget, make amendments and cut the taxes at that point. Mill it away, and then we'll talk about tax rate. But to just simply go out and say zero increase for all properties, that's really dangerous and without information, so I'll be voting against it.
Councilor Robinson. Okay, so. Any objections to this? Councilor Bishop.
More taxes, more employees, more of everything. That's what we're going through every year. People that are trying to meet their expenses, pay their bills, that are on fixed income are not fixed income, doesn't matter. They can't afford the increases that we're talking about and have had in the last few years. It's time for us to realize, do we want more government, or do we want to keep the people here that are living here? I vote for the people that are living here now and want to stay here. We're driving them out. We're forcing some people to sell their homes because they can't afford the taxes and, you know, as well as making their mortgage payment. So, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to a conference. Maybe we can get some answers from the city manager, but I, I really think that we need to adopt a philosophy that enough is enough. You know, how many employees do we need in the city? Thank you.
Councilor Avellaneda.
On the conference. For years, I heard from our public officials, firefighters in particular, that we didn't have enough firefighters, based on fire studies that were done, and there was a clamoring of more firefighters. Yeah, so we had to hire more firefighters. I never heard anyone out there telling me they want less police officers. Please tell me that homeowner that tells me they want less police officers on the street, or they don't want more DPW workers to take care of, or they don't want smaller classes offered by our teachers because we have a burgeoning, or we don't want a new school built. Who has told me they don't want that? Yeah, I know. They don't want to pay taxes, but they want the services. Well, the two don't go hand in hand. They do not go hand in hand. And every year, when we have the tax rate set before us, I can't remember when the last time, or if ever, ever, that Chelsea wasn't one of the lowest rates amongst the communities around us. Revere pays more if you own a home there. East Boston pays more. Everett pays more. Time and time again, we're proving we're one of the, we're either in the middle of the pack or below. So we're doing our job. Council after council has been doing it year after year, providing the lowest possible rate for the maximum service, and we're finally catching up to all that work that needs to be done. If you don't think, you want to give tax breaks, okay, stop putting orders to fix the streets that you keep on begging about. Don't fix them.
Address, address the chair. Councilor Pelatonda.
Yeah, I, for one, like some of the other councils and some with me or out with me. I want to know what the precautions are going to be about this, this tax cut. I want to see figures on the table. I want to see how much money we're going to be losing, how much more money is going to be going to fixing roads or, you know, paying for more firemen, more police. I want to see the actual figures before I can vote it. Yes, I'd love a tax break. Yes, I'd love to pay 0% taxes, but, and then, on the other hand, I hear people being forced out, people selling their homes, but I'm sure, you know, as a, as a realtor can tell you, I mean, these homes in Chelsea are selling for a lot of money. I mean, condos are selling for $400,000, $500,000. Two-family houses are probably going for $600,000, $800,000. I mean, I don't feel that we're pushing people out. People are probably selling their properties for huge amounts of money and going some, somewhere else so that they can afford if they can't live in Chelsea. But I, for one, would like to see the figures on the table before we can make a final decision. Thank you.
Councilor Brown, did you want to speak? Okay. Councilor Recupero.
As far as the tax rate, we pay some of the highest. We pay $14 in change. Boston's only $11 or $12, whatever the amount they pay, but that's not even the point. The point is this. Instead of, why can't we just help the homeowners, the ones that actually own homes here, which is only $2,000 and something, that own homes? It's one-third of the housing stock is owned. That's all it is. So why can't we help them? You know, it doesn't say help all the homeowners, because all the homeowners, three, half, more than half, two-thirds, are rentals. So why not help the homeowners that actually lives in this home? Those are the ones that need it the most. It's the ones that live in their home and need a break each year. I've been here, all the years I've been here, I've never seen a tax break on anything. I've seen 18%, 17%. When I started, it used to be $11. Now it's $15. Next year would be $17. Nobody's saying that you got to hire less firefighters or less cops or less, nobody wants that. The whole thing we want is to be a fair and impartial to the person that owns their homes and lives there. Yes, they're going to tell you, oh, we give them a break by them living here. Oh, Revere does this and that one does that. Everybody does everything. Boston gives you a bigger break. My father lives in Boston, and he gets a bigger break. Everybody, but that's not the point. The whole point is trying to help the poor homeowners that live here, them to stay here, not force them out. We can amend the thing and say, instead of everybody, just put the homeowners, the ones that live here, that actually own their homes and live here, which is only $2,000 and change. That's all there is out of this whole city. There's no more than that. One-third of the population. The rest of it is stock for rental. So we don't, we don't want to give them a, you want to help the homeowner to stay here. So why can't they themselves get a break? Is that so wrong to want to help someone that's sacrificed, or even an old person that owns this house? Why should he be pushed out? Why should he? Or if he has a tenant that's within 20 years? Oh, well, raise his rent. Maybe the old guy doesn't want to. So why can't you help them? What's so wrong with trying to help the poor people that are here that actually own their homes? There's nothing wrong with that. Maybe it's time we should reevaluate and think of them, not everybody else. Them too. They are part of it.
Thank you, Councilor Recupero. Just for the record, this is going to conference, and we will have an opportunity to discuss it then, but for the record and for, for the public to know, nowhere in this order does it state anything about owner-occupied homes. So, I mean, I'm not, we could discuss that at subcommittee, but just for the sake of, you know, transparency and clarity, that does not, that's not mentioned in the order. But moving on to the next order of business. Yeah, exactly, of property taxes.
Order introduced by Council Bishop. Order that the city manager notify all the departments that place legal ads in the local paper that the city seal must appear in the ads.
Chair recognizes Council Bishop. Adopt under suspension. Seeing no objections.
Order introduced by Council Bishop. Order that a subcommittee conference be held with the city manager and appropriate department heads and personnel regarding the brightness of street lights and what we can do to purchase brighter lights for the city of Chelsea.
Councilor Bishop. Adopt under suspension, seeing no obje, Councilor Avellaneda.
Motion to amend that it go to the committee on public works and not on conference?
A motion to move to the subcommittee of public works? No objections?
Let's see if that's the appropriate committee that it should be going to.
I just, I asked for a conference because I wanted all the members to, you know, be part of it. That's why I put it in that one. Doesn't matter, I mean, as long as we have the conference.
So what are we doing here? So it's going to the subcommittee on public works? All right.
Order introduced by Council Bishop. Order that the city manager provide a printed list for District 1 on resident permit parking and overnight commercial parking to include by street, street number from 1117 to 3118.
Chair recognizes Councilor Bishop.
I move suspension, Madam Chairman, which I spoke on it earlier, so I don't need to speak.
Seeing no objections, so moved.
We have the CIP, we have the CIP loan. Refer it to the conference. Move it to the conference.
The pending CIP conference, yeah. Subcommittee conference. Well, that was fun. Now we'll open it up for any public announcements. Councilor Brown?
So tomorrow, just want to remind the residents that's watching, that's viewing this taping tonight, that we have a meeting with DOT tomorrow at the senior center here, over here Riley's Way at 6:30. Again, it's about the 111 and other buses here, in particular, a lot of the discussion is going to be about the North Washington Street Bridge coming out of Haymarket, coming into Boston. So if you've been getting frustrated and you really want to find out what's going on and what's going to be done about that, and also going down the Lower Beacon Street Bridge and Fourth Street Bridge, you should come out tomorrow. It's at 6:30. It's right here at the senior center. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Moment of silence? All right, so.
Resident Dave Pruski passed away, and many of us know him as to be someone who is a strong advocate for Chelsea residents, the environment, and such things. I hope someday I get to be that old and be that much of a pain in the butt to people. So, thank you.
Seeing no further business before us?
I know a holy week's upon us today and this week, so enjoy your family, enjoy your loved ones, and have a good time. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.